We'll get prepared to go ahead and get started. And we're going to start with prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, that you blessed us. And you blessed us that we've been able to come together to study your word. We thank you, Heavenly Father, because although we know that we're doing it, the electronics, but we know that we're joined together with your Holy Spirit. Because Heavenly Father, we come together agreeing, agreeing so much as if we're touching. So we want to thank you, Heavenly Father, for your presence amongst us, Lord. We thank you for the blessings, Heavenly Father. The blessings that we're going to get in your word, Heavenly Father, the blessings that we get in your prayer. And we thank you, Lord, for those that are on. And I should bless those that are going to get on and those that want to be on. We thank you. Praise you in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, we are studying Proverbs and still continuing in Proverbs. On last week, we finished up chapter nineteen. With chapter twenty being where we'll start tonight, but before we get into that, I'd like to always extend the opportunity for someone that, you know, if you, somebody want to give some feedback on what they have learned or experienced, some things that may, they may have come to them over the week about the lessons that we've talked about. Or, you know, even we're on last week and want to share something, they didn't get a chance. If you have something you want to share, you can do so at this time. Okay, all right. So when we look at the book of Proverbs, you know, and we say this, you know, so many different times and different ones saying it in different ways, about when we're studying a proverb, Proverbs is, you know, like a practical, is a practical thing that we could look at, study, and put into action. Because basically, it's, really, it's more of King Solomon making observation and speaking things. But, you know, it's kind of like one of the things that you can look at from a, I guess you could say like from a corner view. Because it's, you know, it's practical. It's, you know, it's not like when Jesus was speaking and he was saying that he spoke in parables. So those that, you know, you might hear and don't understand, okay? So with Proverbs, it's one of those things where it's hard to say, I didn't understand. You know, when, 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 you know, we study Proverbs and one of the proverb says, you know, like, fools find no pleasure in understanding, but delight in their own opinions. Okay, it gives you a feel of, if you, you know, if, if, if you don't find pleasure, or if you don't find anything good, like getting understanding about something, but yet you want to go ahead and, you know, it's kind of like one of the things is like, people make up a lie and then they'll believe it. You know, they're talking about somebody, they'll make up a lie about them, and then they'll believe it. So, you know, that's a practical thing. If you, somebody that does that, then, you know, like Proverbs referred to as fool. And so that's a practical thing that we could put into play of saying, okay, I can't do that with that. I need to figure out what's actually going on before I say anything, okay? And so that's the thing that we find out about Proverbs. And so once we get, we take the Proverbs and we take the Holy Spirit and bring them together. You see, it makes us greater soldier for God, a greater Christian. Because, you know, we, it helps us to get to that part where Jesus was talking about. We can hear and we can understand, or we can see, you know, and we can perceive. And so that's one of the great things about Proverbs, okay? So what we'll do is we'll go ahead and get into our lesson for tonight. We're going to be in Proverbs chapter twenty, Proverbs chapter twenty. And we're going to be starting at the first verse, okay? If somebody want to, if somebody will read, go ahead and read. Tell you what, let's, let's go ahead and read the first four verses. And then we can, our first five verses, and we can have a discussion on those. Proverbs chapter twenty, verses one through five.
Yes.
Okay, wine, am I in the right place? Twenty, point through five, okay. Wine is a marker and beer a brawler. Whoever is led astray by them is not wise. A king's wrath strikes terror like the roar of a lion. Those who anger him forfeit their lives. It is to one's honor to avoid strife, but every fool is quick to quarrel. Sluggards do not plow in season, so at harvest time they look but find nothing. The purposes of a person's heart are deep waters, but one who has insight draws them out. That's Proverbs twenty-one through five.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody want to start a discussion on those verses? What do you see there? Okay, all right, so here, here he's starting out, you know, wine is a marker and beer a brawler, or, you know, a beer or strong drink. So one of the things, when we look at the, you know, what's practical about this, what's one of the things that when we, you know, you got man and alcohol? Okay, so, so one of the things we find is when there's too much alcohol involved, okay? Usually, usually it's trouble, right? And see, in the Bible even teaches us not to, you know, be consumed by too much alcohol. Because, you know, you know, the, the, when it comes to, this is one of the things that when it comes to man, that whenever, you know, he's not in control of himself because he is drunk, then the things of his heart start pouring out, the truth start pouring out, you know? And one of the things that we have to keep in mind and understand is the actual heart of man, you know, there's a lot of evil, there's a lot of wickedness. And there's a lot of things that, you know, harmful, hurtful, things that, 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 that man will do, or man want to say. But whenever he's in control, he know how to control that. He know how to, okay, I don't need to say it this way, or I don't need to say it at all. What, whenever they get in this situation, then all of that's coming out. The truth is coming out, all that's coming out. And so, you know, it makes it, you know, more of a, a, a marker, or you, you know, you're, you're not a considerate, you're not being considerate of others, you know, of the others that you're dealing with. And the other thing is, you know, and then, you know, it says beer, brawler, or strong drink, you're, you're, you're like starting trouble, you're, you know, into something you don't need to be in. You're doing things that you don't need to do. So when we look at this and you think about this, and you know, it says whoever is led astray by them is not wise. So there's several things there that, that if I relate this to today's setting. Now, what happens is, as Christians, we have to be very careful. And, and what that is, is if people that are, you know, they're, they're, they're trying to find a way, they're trying to get, learn the way, and they look up to, you know, they're, they're looking up to you as a, 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 you know, a senior Christian, if you will, or a big brother Christian. And they're seeing you consuming this, especially if they are trying to kick the habit themselves, you know, or have just kicked the habit. And so it, it, it gives them, it gives the, the signal of, okay, well, if they're doing it, I can do it. Well, okay, you may control it, but they can't. So now what happens is, you cause them to stumble, stumble back into the grips of alcoholism. And so if, and, and, and when we, we look at the whole picture of this, alcoholism is a spirit, right?
That's right.
So when someone is delivered from alcoholism, that means they've been cleansed of that spirit. We are in charge of helping them gain the Holy Spirit to fill that void, because if we don't, and we lead them into, back into the spirit of alcohol, well, guess what's happened? The scripture says, not only is he going, he's bringing, you know, what was it, seven?
Seven more, right.
And so now, the state of him is worse than what he was before. And, and what happened is, we may have been the one that caused them to stumble. And the Bible say we went to, right? So when we, we, we see this, we have to be careful on how we, you know, how we do things. Because, you know, with, with, with wine, beer, strong drinks, you know, alcohol especially, it puts us in a bad state of mind. You can't go minister to somebody, you know, when you're drunk. And the thing about being a vessel of God is, you don't know when you're going to get a call saying, hey, we need some help, hey, we need you to come to us, we're in the hospital, we need this. And so now you got to deal with, okay, first of all, you know, you're not, you don't need to be on the road driving. And then whenever you get there, what are you going to say? What, what are you, you know, how are you going to be a vessel for God? When alcohol, you know, is consumed, consuming you, controlling you. And so here, you know, is the thing that we see here, that part of the thing that King Solomon is teaching. You know, if you consume too much wine, you consume too much beer, you know, strong drink, then you're really no good to the kingdom.
Amen.
You know, you become a marker, you become a brawler, you're no good to the kingdom, okay?
Amen.
Pastor, you want to say something?
Well, you know, the, I think the larger piece is, you know, that we need to know as Christians that God does not want us into the influence of anything but him.
Amen.
So that in the influence of alcohol put us in what would be an altered state. And, and so the, the challenge with the altered state is not the state that God won't place us in, and the state that he wants us in. He wants us in a higher state of mind. And so that's why, you know, when they say alcohol, they call it spirits.
Right, absolutely.
Because it alters the spirit, you know? And so, and it gets, when folks are under the influence, God does not want us to be under the influence of anyone except for him. That's the only way we could seek first the kingdom of God. And so that, that's, that's the, you know, what happens is that a lot of people, some, you know, people, or God knows, he knows where we're vulnerable. We have various vulnerability, you know, things that we're vulnerable to. But alcohol happens to be addictive and destructive.
Amen.
And so I heard you say it brings out the truth, but sometimes it brings out another, you know, another identity. An identity, and not the one that God originally placed on us, you know? So where it's usually strong, it'll make you weak. When you're usually coherent, it'll make you incoherent. And so it alters the, the original design. So it actually, sometimes it covers the truth. Our true set is that we're holy and that we're the very righteousness of God. And if something alters that, then that can be a negative influence that puts us into a position where we're vulnerable and we're not representing God at our best.
Okay, anybody else want to add something? Okay. All right, so let's go to the verse two. It says, "A king's wrath strikes terror like the roar of a lion." "Those who anger him forfeit their lives." All right, class, somebody will start a discussion on that verse? All right, okay, so, so here it says, "King's wrath strike terror," you know, or, you know, look at it as a, if you look at, instead of saying kings, a leader, you know, so, and it, it, it fits. So it says, "King's wrath strikes terror like a lion's roar." So here, here's the thing, you know, when, especially on this part here, talking about a king, and you know, you're dealing with kings, that's, that's due to the authority, that's it. You know, when it comes in, you know, like a country that have kings. So, and, you know, like, especially during this time that we're, you know, talking here. So when we talk about kings and we, you think about back in the day, King Nebuchadnezzar, you know, when he dealt with, or when, you know, Daniel and the three Hebrew boys. And so the thing is, they want to strike terror. You know, terror, they want to strike fear, they want you to, they want the people to be afraid of them. And their purpose is so that they can stay under them, they can stay, you know, submissive to them, that they won't try to uprise. And so, you know, and anything that far as what, you know, we in this country say are our rights, you know, we have the right to do this and all this. Well, when it's, you're dealing with a monarch or king, you know, those rights aren't there, simply because they want to keep control. And so here we, you know, it's saying is that, you know, a king's wrath strike terror like a roaring lion. So if you're gonna, you know, you're going to try to cross him, if you will, so what he's going to do is he's going to try to make an example of you. So we, we, we think back to, if we think back to slavery, you know, one of the reason that slavery was successful is because of terror. You have someone that want to rebel against slavery or run away, then that's why they were punished so severely in front of the others, because it is to strike terror, you know, fear. And so that's what we find here, that the kings tried to do. And so, and it's not only that, so, so that's why when they say, you can look at it from a leader's standpoint, if you run an organization and you got somebody that want to go against, you know, what you set forth, you know, the, you're going to do one of the things that put fear in rest of them. You know, so they may be fired, or, you know, something like that. And so this is observations that King Solomon, you know, he seen, he know. And so he says that, okay, you got, they're going to do something to you to try to make an example of you. And then it says, "Those who anger him forfeit their lives." And you see what happens when we go back to the Hebrew boys. The king thought he was, he thought he was doing something. He thought he, you know, he was going to take their lives. And he did the worst form of punishment, because, you know, when we talk about the fiery furnace, how he heated it up hotter than ever, okay? I said something, and I'm going to make an example of you, okay? Daniel, the lion's den. And so those are the things that they would do. And so as King Solomon say, if you cross him, then this is what you expect. You, you, you put your life on the line.
And pastor, I mean, teacher, we have to remember when a king make a decree, if he make a decree, you know, to kill off, like they kill all the babies. And if that king make, make a decree, that decree cannot be changed. He can't change that decree. They have to follow through with that decree. So a king's words is very powerful. And if he said he's going to do something, he's going to do it, especially when he's making, making that decree.
Right, and so when he's a, he's an evil king, there's, you know, it's, it's really tough for people, because when he's the evil king, he'll do evil things, you know?
Amen.
Okay.
So I think it also gives us a warning for, we talk about wisdom, and this is a book of wisdom. We know that if we're around kings who, who may, you know, be insecure about their, their power sometimes. They, or they, you know, you know, may be boastful, that kind. And it tells us how to be around it, like, you know, that's not a time for you to be boastful. It's the time for us to be humble. And so, so that we don't lose our lives over something that was, you know, that is not worth losing live over.
Right.
Now, the Hebrew boys, they were not going to deny their faith. And so that was worth them, they, they had a backing because they were ordained by God to have that, that conversation.
That's right.
But if you're not the three Hebrew boys, it might not be a time for you to be saying stuff, you know?
Right.
You know, that's, that's something to keep your head down, keep working till God give you the, you know, that that's the time and place for you to do the protest. But also to have the wisdom of discernment, that it don't go, you know, picking a fight with a roaring lion. You know, if it's in, in, you know, if it's about to save your people, that kind of stuff, you know, if you, or Esther, or something like that, that's when you have to step up. Otherwise, just to be, you know, fighting for the sake of fighting, then you're going to die. You know, there's, there's no honor in that.
Right. Amen.
Okay, anybody else want to add something? Okay, and you know, you know, if we go political, you know, some of these same things we see today. You know, even in a, a, a country where you're supposed to have a right to force your opinion on certain things, you know, you, you, you see that today. The vengeance, you know, I have this power, I have this authority, and, you know, and where I can abuse it and nothing happens. So, you know, here I'm getting my vengeance. And so, you know, is, is, is there, or, you know, to do that, try to send a message. And so we have to be careful. All right, verse three says, "It is to one's honor to avoid strife, but every fool is quick to quarrel." Okay, class, somebody want to start a discussion on that? Why, why would we want to avoid strife?
Well, I think one of the examples I just gave, and I think that's why it's written kind of close together, maybe. You know, why are you going to tug on Superman's cape? Right? If, you know, all you're going to do is aggravate somebody with power, why would you bring strife? Just humility, just, you know, I know that, just, I know, you know, that the king doesn't like this, and I know the king, so keep my mouth on that one. You know, you got to live to see another day. And fight the fight that, that matter.
That's right.
So just having strife for strife's sake and stuff, it just, you know, keeps a lot of thing going, a lot of energy is used without fighting the real fight.
Amen.
Okay, somebody else want to add something? Okay, and, you know, and, and, and I think too is, when, you know, if, if you, every time you show up and you somewhere and there's problems, you, you know, you, you're starting fights, or you're starting something, then what happens is, well, first off, if you're supposed to be a child of God, then you gained that reputation, you know, of a, of a, of a brawler, you know, you gained that reputation. It's about like king, not king, I'm sorry, it's about like Saul. When he was Saul, now when he became Paul, he still had that reputation of Saul. And so, you know, he had to, you know, it, it took him a little bit, you know, so like when, when God told Ceneys, it's Ceneys, well, you know, when, 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 when he, when Saul got knocked off the horse, and he was blind, and he had to go see the priest. And here he was, whoa, wait a minute, God, he's killing people. And even after he was, you know, a soldier for God, and he would go see people, they were like, whoa, you talking about Saul? No, no, you know, because he's killing people. So, you know, what happens is, it brings about a reputation that is, you know, not godly. And it, it, it can hinder your ministry, it can hinder your ministry, okay?
Amen.
All right. All right, so no one else have anything on, on that?
I, I do, and we can take it, just with everything that's going on in the world, conversations, controversy, conspiracy theory, especially on social media. Everybody's trying to be heard. And what this verse is saying, like, avoiding fights is a mark of honor just because something is posted, I mean, you have to comment on everything, or put your opinion out there. Just, you know, you, you avoid it, what, is it even worth your time and energy? And I see it often now, just about whether, you know, I'm at work or if I'm out in the field where you have these, I call them useless, or useless conversations, is what they are. And, you know, people try to bring you into these conversations, but you have to have the insight and, you know, the knowledge, hey, I'm, I'm going to avoid this at all, by all means, because obviously my opinion is not going to penetrate or change your, your situation or your mind or anything else. So it's not even worth it. So that, that verse three actually stands true to this day, not just with kings and queens and royalty, but just everyday life situations.
Amen, okay. Thank you for that. Anybody else have something want to add? All right, verse four, "Sluggards do not plow in season, so at harvest time they look but find nothing." Okay, class, somebody want to start a discussion? We're talking about a slug or a lazy person. Okay, so here he's, he's using farming. So, you know, the sluggers, they don't plow in season. So, you know, at harvest time, there's nothing. You're too lazy to go out and, and, and plow or, you know, plant your, but yet, come harvest time, you're looking, you're not going to find anything. So, and, you know, we, if we step away from it, from that standpoint, is anything, you know, if you're too lazy to go out and work, well, when it's time, payday time come, don't come looking for it, don't come. You know, if you, if you, if you're not in the Word, and you're not studying your Word, and spending time with God, okay? When trouble come, Okay, when trouble come, you know, you you can't expect anything because he's given us. You know, so um, you know, when 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 these things happen, um, and, you know, like um. Small things, if we will, and we trust God in those, and we learn how to trust God like that. So whenever the big things come, we already know that we can trust God, okay? So it it's basically the same thing, you're sowing so that you can reap.
Amen.
Right, you know, you're sowing, um, you're you're sowing faith, you're sowing trust. You're sowing um, um, time with God, you're sowing um, studying his word, all of that you're sowing. So when it's time to reap, you have something that you can reap. Somebody wanna add something?
Brother Chris, I want to add to that in in a sense that, you know, it it goes back to that sentiment that. Um, we look for the easy button at times. So, we 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 want to um. Have a a a smooth sailing to go there, but as we go through trials and tribulations, um, again, being persecuted. Um, back to Sunday service, uh, tells us that we have to go through some things to grow, but we do have to study. To make sure we're continuing to grow and we grow in the right way. Um, so we're looking for those things that are easy, we. Kind of stay away from the word because the word kind of convicts us to let us know, uh, it's not gonna be easy growth. We have to uh, plow, we have to plant, we have to, you know, do whatever we need to do to be a part. Of the learning process to grow, and that learning process is how we're learning to stay in God's graces. So we have to learn more about God, we have to read, we have to ask others what to do. So there's a lot of work involved in not being lazy, but that work gets us um, connected to the true vine.
Yes, and 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 it's like, um, Jesus even tell us that, you know, and he tells us. Um, you know, he come on the scene and say, come to me, oh, you we rehealing lady. And he told, he tells that, I'll give you rest. But he also says, you better study and learn of me. And he said, in that you will find rest your soul, so in the studying, like you're saying, you know, that's the work, that's that's that's, you know. You you can't be lazy and expect to recent receive something is is basically what we have to understand. Okay, pastor, were you gonna say something here? Oh, go ahead.
To be any kind of leader, there's always training programs. If you wanna be a manager, you have to go through a training program. You wanna be a team leader, go through a training program. If you want to take a leadership role, you have to be trained. And it's not that you're sitting there and they're pouring knowledge into you, you are studying and showing. And and practicing and and sharpening, all of these things have to happen in order for you to take a leadership role. Because we have the Holy Spirit and the charge had been placed on us to do so, we must understand we're still, we still have to train. To be worthy and and honorable and also effective in what we do, because situations change. If we don't experience those situations and learn to adapt to those, then we can't be effective in what we're doing for God.
Amen.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to mention that. Well, two aspects. Um, I'm thinking about the Bible was saying. That the harvest is plentiful, but the labors are few. You know, everybody, you know, would would like to have a a um, a more healthy. Um, uh, ministry, but nobody wants to minister. Um, and, you know, we we gotta do the work of advantage. Um, and and go into the highways and byways.
That's right.
And 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 say, you know, and tell people of the goodness of the Lord.
Amen.
That's 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 our work.
Yeah, that's our work.
Um, our work too is, you know, renewing our mind. And um, and renewing our mind, just like, you know, it's been said before. Is to spend time in in the word. And it's great, we know, we're speaking to the choir, cuz y'all y'all come, but. Um, we we probably have close to two hundred members, but we usually have about fourteen members on Bible study.
Amen.
But everybody want God to come and bless and want us to be strong. We wanna be able to speak the things that are not as though they were. You know, you gotta know a word to speak a word.
That's right.
And you have to spend time with God, all the, when we read about these people in the Bible who got instruction from God, from God, spent time with.
That's right.
They tear it, tear it, nigga. Um, and you know, is prayer and supplication. And also sanctification. All all those are investments. Those are investments in in we, when we look at our television time, look at our phone time and and that kind of time, sometimes the gossip time. And if our gossip is bigger than our gospel, we got a problem. That's what I'm saying is that, you know, uh, um, I you I used to, you know, when I played golf and that kind of thing. Um, then and play competitive, I worked 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 on my game, and I got on the tee. I didn't care who you were, I just didn't believe that you were gonna beat me, not because of what you did. But because what I've done. And and it's when we spend time in the Bible, spend time with God, and when Satan come on the tee. I don't care about who he is. I just spend the time with. And he could twirl his clubs and he can have the best looking equipment and he can roar, you know, like a lion. But if I pay my time with God, and he's giving me a divine assignment. Uh, I put my time in, and so the when our harvest, the harvest of that is the confidence of knowing I've spent time with. And so when we've done that, that's when we have confidence at the altar time. Sometimes we go up to the altar and say, if that's the first time you prayed all week. Uh, you know, and if I'm messing around battling a counselor, I just don't want you laying hands on me.
I know now.
But you're not prepared, you haven't spent enough time. And if you haven't laid out and and um, you know, and prayed up and not spend time in the mornings with a devotion of some type. Uh, go to bed and, you know, and you know, have some conversation with God. Uh, then, you know, there's some battles that we're not prepared to fight. That's the deal, if we're lazy about our relationship, we're relation lazy about our financial relationship. We robbing God and then going to begging God, robbing God, if you come and and rob me. And then come beg for me. I catch you going out the back door with my stuff and then you come on the front door and say, look, I want you to come and heal me. Like, ain't you the one that just ran out the door?
Come back for something else.
You come back for something else, just ran out the door with my pan and then you come to the door asking for my pot.
That's right.
Well, cuz I know something about that, cuz I've done it when I was younger and didn't understand it.
Right.
All I did is I came to God for a spare tire. I hadn't put any time in with it. And felt like I could come and get everything from him.
Right, amen.
And, you know, really, the more time I spend with him now, you know, the less I have to ask him about.
Amen.
Cuz it's a constant conversation. So, that that's what I see, you know, that as a church body. That that we get, we cannot be sluggards, um, with our relationship with with God. We have to be diligent about stuff and diligent about what he has us to do. And then the the then we'll have that harvest. That will harvest, and so, um, that's what I'm thinking that, you know, when I see that we. Have to m- make sure that when Jesus comes back, that we have plenty of candidates that we brought with us.
Amen.
That, you know, I'd I'd hate to say, you know, I should have said something to so and so. And and they're going to hell because I didn't say something to them.
Amen.
So, and more and more, since everybody I talk to, they might get tired of it, but they'll just get tired of it, but. We're gonna talk a little bit about Jesus if I get a chance to. Yeah, I just came from a guy's house to talk to him about some roofing and stuff like that, and we ended up talking about God. That's that's gonna be my conversation, is I'm gonna plant, I don't know where he's standing when I standing with God. When I get there, but I'm gonna know where he's standing with God when we leave.
Amen.
You know, he tell me to get out his house and go ahead, but he he deal is, is I'm gonna put that God stain on him, he can't wash off.
Amen, that's right, amen.
And and the deal is, is that I don't have to see it multiply in front of me, I can plant, somebody else can water. God will give the increase. Right, but but if we're not planting or watering. You know, then we're not doing what we need to do, and so I look at it from a from a a church perspective.
Right.
Making sure that we're not sluggers about spreading his word, making sure that we're not sluggers about um. Funding his program through ties and offering, um, make sure that we're not sluggers. In offering um, care and 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 love to folks. And people can't be running out of love if we're around. As we should be planting it all the time.
Amen.
Anybody else got something they wanna add?
Yes, I would like to read Matthew uh, twenty five, and I'm gonna start at the fourteen verse. And this right coincide with being lazy, and we know that we cannot produce anything if we are lazy. When it comes to the things of God, we have to be prop, we have to be on. Uh, our post-it duty and do what the Holy Spirit have us to do, so I'm gonna read this right here. The parable of the talents, for the kingdom of heaven is like a man traveling to a far country. Who call his own servant and deliver his good to them, and to one he gave five talents, and to another two. And two. And to another one, to each according to his own ability, and immediately he went on a journey. Then he had, who had received the five talent went and traded with them. And made another five talent, and likewise, he who had received two gained two more also. But he who received one went and dug in the ground and hide his Lord's money. After a long time, the Lord, the Lord of those servant came and settled account with them. So, he who received five talent came and bought the five, saying, Lord, you delivered me. Deliver me five talents, look, I have gained five more talents besides them. And his Lord says, well done, good and faithful servant, you're ruler. You were faithful over a few, and I will make you ruler over many things. Enter to the joy of your Lord, he also had received two talent, came and said, Lord. You delivered to me two talents, look, I have gained two more talents besides them. His Lord said, well done, good and faithful servant, you have been faithful over a few things, I will make you ruler. Over many, enter to the joy of the Lord, then he that received one talent came and said, Lord, I knew. That that I knew you to be a hard man, reaping where you have not sown and gather where you have not scattered seed. And I was afraid and went and hid your talent in the ground, look, look there, you have. What is yours, but his Lord answered and said unto him, you wicked and lazy servant. So, and we have talents, God has given us talent for the kingdom of God. And we have to, we have to really increase our talents. Because somebody is waiting on us, some people are assigned to our hand, and we can't be lazy. You know, because if we are lazy, then those people that are not saved cannot get saved. You know, because we we take our talent and we hide it, and we don't do what the Lord tell us to do. You know, and we want the Lord to bless us, but what he have given you, you you haven't even used that. This man that had one talent dig in the ground and hide his talent. And sometime God will give us a specific assignment, and we will say, well, Lord, I can't do that, I'm not smart enough. I don't have enough education, you know, I haven't been to theology school, you know, giving God all of this back. You know, because you don't wanna do it, we have to be willing and obedient to do what our heavenly Father. Have called us to do, that's why we're here, we're here on assignment, you know, we're not here to please ourselves. We are here to do what thus said the Lord thy God. So, it's telling us the talents that we have, take those talents and be a blessing in the kingdom of God. Cuz somebody need it, somebody need it, don't just, you know, look on others and and try to compare with others, just do what God told you to do. You know, because you're unique in your own way, just do what he tell you to do, when you do what he tells you to do, then you pleasing him. You're not pleasing individuals, but you're pleasing unto God, so we cannot afford to be lazy. And if if the pastor and the first lady have given you an assignment, do the best that you can do. Don't half do stuff, you got people in church, you know, if they're cleaning the church, they have clean in the church, you know? If they got a prayer, they have praying, we can't be like that, we cannot be like that. And God is teaching us and want us to know how to do it, and when we do it, we do it with um. With praise, we praise him, you know, we do it to the best of our abilities. We don't just, you know, say, well, I'm just doing something, you might have to do the communion, you're just throwing stuff together. We don't supposed to be like that, we are the church, we are the examples. The only the only God that people are gonna know when they look at our lives. When they look at me, they look at my husband, you look at the teacher, you know, that's how they know who God is. So, we cannot be lazy, don't hide the talent, dig it up, if it's in the ground now, dig it up. Okay, dig it up and let's go forward and do what thus said the Lord thy God, and we will be a blessing to somebody else's life. Amen.
Amen. And 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 that that rolls right into this verse five, and and this is King James, it said, counsel. In the heart of man is like deep water, but a man of understanding would draw it out. Um, and and so when I see this, I'm seeing, you know, you you there there's some, um. There there's some, you know, well, there's ta- some talents that's deep within, you know? But whenever we we um, seek wise counsel, you know, someone of understanding. That you understand what's going on and allow them to explain to us, um, you know, what it's about. How to do, you know, and and where to go, then those talent that deep within. It helps us to bring those out, you know, it's it's, you know, it's it's whenever you you're reading about the talents. And, you know, the different ones saying that, you know, you gave me this and I um, earned, I doubled it. Okay, so what that tells me is, you know, they went to the right place to get the right answer. Okay, and so when that hit it in the ground, it tells me that, okay, I'm. And so, one that hit it in the ground, it tells me that, okay, I'm gonna do this on my own. I'm not gonna seek no wise counsel. I got this. I'm, I'm gonna handle this on my own. When we look at this verse here in, in, in reference to that, you know, it, 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 it lets me know. That, you know, there are some things that God have within us. We have to speak to people, you know, some people that's got some wise counsel that understands some things, so that they can help bring that out. You know, help, help us to understand, uh, wha- what is this about? How do I multiply this? How, how do? You know, in, 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 you know, it's, i- i- in, in every area of our lives, you know, our finances, okay? How do I, um, you know, uh, uh, um. How, how do I gain wealth? How do I get to the point where I could pay my bills and, and then, you know, bring the tab? And, and, and all this, ha- and, and, and we seek wise counsel. You know, there's a talent that is within all of us. And we have to understand about wise counsel. And, you know, and opening up to people to allow them to pull that out, help pull that out.
Amen. Amen, and pastor, I keep calling you pastor.
And you know, that is why it's so important that we be in our service. That we be in Bible study, so you can learn, you know. How to stir up the gift of God that's on the inside of you. You can learn at your house, okay? You can learn, you know, dealing with other things that it doesn't pertain to Christ. So you have to sit under teaching. You sit under that teaching, you know, and your pastor or whoever, they're going to impart in you. And empower you, and that's gonna make you better, you know? And we all should want to be better, better for the kingdom of God, because that is why we are here. We are here to influence the world and tell the world about Jesus and what he have done for all humanity. And we cannot be fearful and slack and slow and don't care, you know? Our attitude has to change. We have to have a godly attitude. You know, God, I thank you. When you think on his goodness and what he have done for you. Glory to God, that ought to motivate you to go and tell somebody else. What, what a great and almighty and an awesome God that we serve.
Okay. Is, is somebody else wanna add something to that? Okay. All right, so we'll move on to, um, we'll, we'll move on to verse six. And verse six says, many claim to have unfailing love, but a faithful person who can find? Okay, so that's kinda like one of the things that, you know, growing up, you know, that, that, you know, parents teach children. About friends, those that say they're your friend, you know, they may not be your friend. Uh, you know, um, be, if you hear it saying, you know, many claim to have unfailing love. Okay, so there'll be many who claim, yeah, I'm your friend and all this. When it's time to go through. Who can you find? You know, it says, but a faithful person, who can you find? So when you going through, somebody that's right there with you. And they staying right there with you, that's the faithful person, you know?
Amen.
And, 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 and so basically, I guess when we look at this, you know, i- i- it, it kinda teaches a lesson of. That the mouth can say anything. Actions that tells the truth. And so, you, you know, we, we, we have to, um, you know, we, we have to understand that. Cause first of all, when we understand that, when we have people who say they're our friends, okay? Then whenever we going through and we find out that, you know, that, that, that they're not faithful. You know, not at least faithful to the friendship. Then it lets us know that, okay, this is what the word saying. I can't hold that against them. I can't hate them because of this, but I still can love them. But I know how I need to love them, or how I need to let them, allow them within my life, you know? And then, and, and, you know, because what happens is, um, God will allow things to happen. So that you can see who is the faithful one. Just like things happened in our, our lives, so that we can see how faithful we are to God.
That's right.
You know, and, and. And so, and so here, we, we need to understand, there's gonna be a lot of people that come to us and say, I love you. But the faithful ones, it, when time gets tough. It's just like when Jesus said, that there gonna be many that come and say, um, call Lord, Lord. And I'm saying, I know you're not. So, you know, it's gonna be, you know, there, there's many people. Um, that, you know, they, 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 they calling God and they claim God. But when time comes to stand up for God, um, they're, they won't stand up for God, okay? All right, anybody just wanna add something to that?
You know, love is as love says, and not as, you know, as love does, not as love says, if y'all heard me say that many times. And, and, you know, not only, as you said, teacher, it teaches, um, uh, we, we test, test our faithfulness to God. But also shows us God's faithfulness to us.
Amen.
The, the things that we go through. We didn't go through anything, we wouldn't know anything about his faithfulness.
That's right. That's the truth.
But, but we go through great trials and tribulations, we can then sing, great is thy faithfulness. We can say, we can say that. We've been through some stuff where we didn't see our way out of it. And then it teaches us how to, how to act and, 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 and we can minister to people in a different way. I've had some friends and, 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 uh, a friend, I, I, I took him, uh, two fans this week. He, um, we had a family reunion. And I had his, um, he, he, I said, man, it's gonna be hot. And in his family reunion, they had some, some fans, but it belonged to next door. People next door, uh, had some big oscillating fans and stuff. He said, but what I do have. I have these two cheap plastic fans. And he said, you can use those, and we, I use those. I had a couple of floor fans and stuff, but they burn up on my trailer. And so I went to, um, uh, to Lowe's and I got, um, a, a black fan and a white fan. That's what he had. And, um, the same brand, and I brought them to him in the box. And he said, man, you don't, you didn't have to do that. I said, you didn't have to let me borrow them neither, did you? And, 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 you know, and then, and he said, well, you, you could have used, you could have said that they just burned it. I know, I saw it. I said, yes, but they're my responsibility. And, and he said, I'mma always remember that. He's a Sunday school teacher at, at Spring Hill. And he said, I'm, I, I'm gonna remember that now. He just kept saying that, I'm, I'm gonna remember this right here, that, that I'm gonna turn that into a, a teaching moment, some kinda way. And, and, uh, you know, uh, so. You, it, y- y- you could talk, you could talk Bible, but you had to walk Bible.
Amen, that's right.
And, and those are the best, best lessons, is that you, you show faithfulness. And when you show faithfulness and you talk about God's faithfulness, it's believable. It, it is unbelievable. But, but people are, you know, they gonna listen to maybe half of what you say. And they gonna check out all that you do.
Right about that.
So if I, if I burn up anything on my trailer belong to me, it belong to you, remind me so I can get it to you.
All right, sir.
Thank you for that. All right.
Let me, let me read Psalms twelve and one. Help, Lord, for the golly are no more, the faithful have vanished from amongst men. Twelve one says, living for God in a deceitful world can be difficult and a lonely battle. At one time, the great prophet Elijah felt so lonely, he wanted to die. But God told him that there were seven thousand other faithful servants. We are never alone in our battle against evil. When you feel alone, seek out other believers for strength and support. So, for pastor, what they're just talking about. So we not alone in this battle. It may seem sometimes that you're by yourself, but there's other faithful people out there. So we just need to seek out others that's doing us the work of God.
Amen.
That's the truth.
And there's some, there's some people, um, elder that are, are out there doing the work and doing it quietly. And, um, you know, the, 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 the thing to, to is that. Um, well, excite somebody who's fighting on the battlefield, see somebody who's fighting alongside them. And as you were saying there, said, there might be somebody saying, man, I'm getting ready to give up on these people.
That's right.
Man, the way these people acting and stuff right here, I'm getting ready to give. And I've got, you know, I've got two friends that would have stopped pastoring. They have stopped. They stopped. And I just believe that somewhere down the line, if I keep pastoring and keep, you know, being friends with them and that kinda thing. That God, God is gonna inspire them to do, you know, to do a new thing. But I didn't get in it to get out, so. No, 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 there's, there's too many people who need. I, I, I worked in social services, I worked in probation parole. I worked with people with disabilities and stuff, and I worked with the state of North Carolina. Um, county government, working with, you know, in, in national conferences. There is nothing that supplies for the people of the nation, of the county, of the state. Of the, uh, of the house than the house of God. Only solution, uh, to, to police situation, uh, to poverty. Uh, to marriage, to health, all that stuff is in this body.
Amen.
That's the only solution. So we have to be faithful, so that, you know, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. Um, brother teacher, I wanted to say that. I think, um, sometimes the giving up part or the losing of faith is because. You know, we're taking our eyes off God and putting it on man. And we lose our faith. We've got to keep, as pastor always say, keep our focus on the main thing. And, um, I think that's what happened to us, because we think the people that we thought had it and know the way. Now, we seeing that they don't know the way. You, you, um, have a form of golliness, but the dying of power thereof. And so, you know, we seeing, um, people, you know, not walking with God or, um, you know, living in righteousness. And it's disheartening, but we can't lose our faith. Like Elder said, we're still seven thousand. God got us some faithful people. But we got to get our eyes off of what's around us and keep our eyes on God, cause Jesus Christ is our pattern, not man.
Amen.
Well said.
Yeah, I had, um, I had a lot of friends. They turned on me, but I got saved. I went to the door. I said, you know what, you remember, but we been doing this, I want you to come with me. And I said, you're gonna steal my friend no matter what you do. But now, I'm the same person, you said, well, I can see that. You get ready, my group, so why don't you come and go with me to the house of love? Black women in a church, I say, see, that's wrong move. You don't know, you've never been in this. Just relieve for somebody to say, you got the mind, we like her, complain, they been on the conversation, it's a, I don't know what you're talking about. I'm, I'm different from a lot of them, I said, y'all have a good idea. This way, I'm a sucker. Then anytime you talk against a church or a pastor, I'm not a part of that. I care who you is. If you're another pastor, talking about a pastor, I walk away from you. Us, it's not right. You know, we supposed to be in Christ, we supposed to love everybody. We supposed to be as one in a big group. See, God, Jesus Christ is the single, all his souls are the other person that he made in his image of man. That's the reason why he was so loved. He loved you, don't care what you do, don't care how bad you are. He still love you. Why? Because he made you, just like him. We got the Holy Spirit on the inside of us. We should never get upset with another person. Well, we human, but we in Christ. If you will get too upset, just walk away. That's what I do.
Anybody else got something they wanna add? Okay, all right, um. So number seven, it, I believe it blends in as well. It says, the just man walketh in his integrity. His children are blessed after him. Okay, that's the King James. And if we look at it in the, um, NIV, it says, the righteous lead blameless lives, blessed are their children after them. Say that again. Yes.
When you talk, when you talk about that, that verse right there, or, or either, just, that's like saying, the person that. If they within Christ and they get, uh, following Christ and, and being obedient to his word. And, and what they learn and then what they install in their children as they grow up. And the teaching and the learning that they give them, their children will take on that, 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 that teaching and that following, and they begin to see and follow Christ there too. So, that's about that. We follow in Christ and then we teach our children the way and the way to, to follow God. And to be obedient to the Holy Spirit, but to be able to study the word too. Uh, even though when you talk about the challenge that, uh, when we looking at God and keeping our eyes on God. And even sometimes the thing that we will, we, about the Holy Spirit teaching us. And, and, and helping us to see more of what God want us to be, it direct us to. And the path of keeping our eyes focused on God, it realize that ain't but one person can do us any good. And any person can do all the things for us is God. So, that, that reason that, that saying teaching and teach your children as they grow. And teach them about God and, and, and install, or, or, or what God word is in them, so it will grow within their spirit. So that they will be able to, to go forth and, and teach their children, and that's where the children get blessed after. We, after coming behind us, because that be installing them to the, the seat for the right way to live.
Okay. All right, somebody else wanna add something? The, the, the one thing I think about when I see that too is, um, um, you know. Um, like back in the day, uh, when, um. You know, how, like, for example, uh, my parents, my grandparents. Um, because of their faithfulness and their, um, integrity. Whenever, um, I would, um, go and like if I needed something. And I would go talk with someone, and you know, and it was like, well, 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 who, 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 who your people? And whenever you explain it to them, they say, oh, I know them. Yeah, they, you know, they're good people and, and, and so. What happens is, um, um, we're receiving favor. Off of their faithfulness, off of them living, you know, with integrity and, and, and so. When I see this, I think, that's what I think about, whenever, you know, parents, you know, they living life of integrity. When the children come along, they can experience, especially getting started off, they can experience the blessings. And, um, from, okay. All right. Anybody else wanna? Wanna chime in on that? Elder, you got something you wanna add to that?
No, I'm good. Just, just, just.
Okay.
This said, here says, the righteous man walk in his integrity. His children are blessed after him. And when you are righteous and you walk in integrity, you are an example to your children. You know, you can't say, you know, that you love God and you, you know, you're doing something else. You know, you are the portrait of who Jesus Christ is. So when you walk in your integrity, your word is, you know, your word is good. You don't say something and do something else. You know, if you promise somebody something, you're gonna make sure, make good of that promise. So we have to have integrity, you know, and we have to start in those little things, having to, integrity. If you telling somebody something that you're gonna do something, don't just say, well, I, I'm not gonna do it and don't call up. You know, making amends. We are, we are the ambassadors and the representatives of the kingdom of God. The only God that people are gonna see is the God that moves and operate in you. So, you know, we have to have that integrity. And we're gonna say something and give somebody our word, make sure that you do what you need to do. And I just had a lady the other day, she told me, she said, Mona, I'm so glad that you called me. She said, because a lot of people wait to the last minute and don't, don't tell me nothing. But she said, you have integrity. And I said, God, I thank you for that. You know, she could see that in me, you know, by what I, um, displayed in her presence. I called her to make sure that she knew what the next step was going to be. So we have to have integrity, you know, we just can't tell people stuff and then we don't do it, don't show up and, oh, man, it's just, you know, we can't be the body of Christ like that and so loose, you know? We have to have that integrity and integrity with one another also. If we telling, you know, sister in the church, well, I'm gonna do this, the Lord put on my heart to do this for you. You know, don't let her have to wait two or three months and you ain't done it yet.
The Lord didn't tell you, that's why he didn't do.
And so, you know, we have to have, have good integrity because somebody's looking at our lives and our children. It's looking at our lives. Sometimes they don't care what you say.
That's true.
They see what you do. You know, so we just have to have that integrity, you know, let our children know that the God that we serve, he is God. He is the real God, you know? And then they see the real God in us and they're gonna give their lives to the Lord. Because of, uh, mom and dad, grandma. Dad, you know, because we had, and we had, have integrity, you know, in front of them. You know, not saying something and living something else. It can't be like that. And God don't want us to be like that. And if we're like that tonight, the Holy Spirit is telling us, I want you to have integrity. Do what I tell you to do. You know, if you say something, let's make it good. Don't make promises that you can't keep. You know, and then if you say something and you can't do it, you call those people. We got to gently, we got to do what we need to do as the body of Christ. We are the body of Christ. We represent the kingdom of God.
Amen.
Psalms thirty-seven talks about your children too. Twenty-five. I was young and now I am old. Yet I have never seen the righteous forsaken or their children begging bread. They are always generous and lend freely. Their children will be blessed. Thirty-seven, twenty-five. Because children starts today as they did in David's time. What did David mean by these words? The children of righteousness need not go hungry because other believers can help out their time of need. In David's day, Israel obeyed God's law that ensured that the poor were treated fairly and mercifully. As long as Israel was obedient, there was enough food for everyone. When Israel forgot God, the rich took care only for themselves and the poor suffered. So as long as we in Christ, he's gonna make a way. All we have to do is stand and wait. It says, the righteous will not be forsaken. So that's what the word says. So all we gotta do is stand on the promise.
Amen.
Everything in that book is true.
Amen.
Amen.
And, you know, um, and, and, and that's, and one of the reasons I wanted to cover this, um, um, this version before we, you know, we quit for tonight, because, you know, one of the examples that Pastor gave about defiance, uh, is a good example of integrity because here, you know, there's an example, I mean, there's an excuse of saying, okay, they burned, you saw it. You know, going out and here. Um, you know, especially when you, we ask somebody, say, I'm gonna borrow this, I'll return it. Okay, you didn't give your word that you're gonna return it. So whatever happens, you know, you being responsible for it and, and you return it. And especially when somebody look at the, the, the difficulty or the, um, you know, um, you had this big issue, but yet you still kept your word, you know, they're knowing that you had hardship and that you had to go out your way to keep your word. And see, that, that, that's, that's integrity. And then when, um, um, when your children come along, you know, in their mind, they'll be like, well, you know, their parents I know had integrity, so, you know, with my mind, I'm giving them the benefit of the doubt. Because I feel like they taught them the same thing and they should be, you know, and they should have the same thing as well. And so, in, in that, that's where we see that, you know, because of that, the children are blessed. And, and, you know, the children receiving favor that was, um, you know, brought about through the parent.
Yes.
The truth.
Yes.
In the favor.
All right. Anybody, anybody else got something they wanna add? Right. If not, okay, we've, 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 um, chapter twenty, we made it, um, through, um, um, verse seven, chapter twenty, verse seven, and so on. Um, next week, if, you know, the Lord's willing, we're gonna start, um, you know, back in chapter twenty, um, verse eight. And cover those, so, you know, if, if, if everyone will, um, read over it, study it. And, um, you know, because we really enjoy the input from everyone. Um, because that's what makes the lesson full. Is, you know, you're not just hearing my perspective, you're not just hearing the evangelist Mona and her husband's perspective. You know, the elders' perspective or the pastor's perspective. You're bringing yours, um, uh, your perspective as well. And so we all grow from each other.
Yes.
And.
That's true.
Amen.
And so that's, that's why we have a, a open Bible study, you know, because we could've, we could've just done this on YouTube where, you know, you got a couple people teaching and everybody else listening. But we do Zooms because we wanna gain the input from everyone because God has given everybody something. Is, you know, as we talked earlier, um, Angela Mona read, um, about the talents, you know? So, you know, as you, um, share your talent of the word, then you also gain talent. And so.
Man.
Back in Jesus.
And the one thing, um, that you don't have to worry about is, you know, are you gonna give a wrong answer? You know?
Oh, no, that's what I'm talking about.
We're, we're, you know, there, there, you know, um, one thing about this is, you know, we're not, um, here trying to, um, embarrass people or to, um, you know, um, focus on, now you're wrong. You know, the, the, the thing that we do is, and, and, you know, pastors does, and it's a thing of a good shepherd. When the sheep, you know, kind of goes stray, is the leader right back in you. And so, you know, that's, that, and, and, and because what's happened is, you know, if we're, uh, understanding wrong, we're gonna do wrong. And the thing that we should wanna do is make sure we, um, get it right, go away, okay? If anybody else have anything, Pastor, we're gonna turn it over to you.
Amen.
And thank you, everybody, for being on.
Pastor Teacher.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, teacher. Appreciate you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
About your Christian presence too. See, I said that, I got to do it.
Got witnesses, huh?
I got one sitting right in front of him.
That's right. God bless y'all. Pastor, if you're talking, you're muted. He may, he may have stepped away. Um, wh- while he, um, Elder Shor, you wanna, um, turn it over to you until he come, or he just started by?
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's a faithful man.
There you.
Yes, sir. Amen. Who can find a faithful man? That's a faithful man.
Yes, he is.
Amen.
Do we have any petitions out there?
Um, I, I.
At this time?
Prayer second, um, um, Miss Shirley. Her name is Miss Shirley. Yeah, for healing, please.
Michelle for healing. And Miss Shirley children, uh, she just passed away. They having a time, so pray for her children.
I'd like to request prayer for Miss Carol's husband and her son, she's son. I also like to put, um, Beecham Mama in for healing, my sister in for healing. Um, another lady in, um, a friend for healing down with, uh, cancer. And although that in Maria, the Maria family, put them in, in prayer for comfort. And put all leadership in prayer for God to just guide them on the right path and hold them up on every knee and side and keep them humble, but keep them obedient to his Holy Spirit. And also for everybody that's got to homies and sickness and everything, just put everything up in prayer. Put God bless all of the living country.
Let us pray, please, pray for Nigeria in war. And a lot of the Christians.
I wanna put a supervisor.
Also, let's, let's pray for, let's pray for the church, you know, the church. Right for spot the world, um, in, in leaning to God because, you know, we're, we're seeing some of the things that Jesus talked about, you know, earthquakes.
I would like to request prayer for our nation and, um, also for, uh, people of God and people who proclaim Christ. Uh, for us to stand up and as we talked about tonight, in integrity. Because people are looking and, and we need it more now than ever before. So the people of God need to be speaking, um, life. They also need to be speaking, uh, Christ. And not, um, being overwhelmed or being, um, taken by the things of this world. So just praying for the boldness of the people of God. Um, and also wanna pray for, uh, Ashley in prayer, all of our children in prayer. Um, and also praying for Sister Awilda and Pastor Adele. Um, they were in an accident a lot too long ago and praise God that they are doing well, they're recovering. Um, and praying for the young lady that was involved in the accident, um, with them, um, praying for her. Um, also, uh, praying for our leaders and, um, praying for, um, all of our pastors and just thanking God for who he is. And thanking him for another opportunity to serve him. Um, and praying for traveling mercies for us as we travel. And also wanted to put my sister-in-law in prayer as well for continued recovery and healing.
Amen.
Put all the back, blacks, backsideers in prayer.
Ah, Jesus.
Amen. Anybody else?
I wanna, um, ask for prayer for the Lewis family and the Bellamy family. Um, they're both, um, battling with loss of loved ones. Also, I'm asking for contin- continuing prayer for my healing, for myself and my daughter. And asking for covering for my children, my grandchildren. And also I'm asking for prayer for our young people as they head back to school, coming up soon in college. And also for our church family. And I'm praying, asking for prayer for my brothers, that they will find salvation. And I just want to ask for wisdom, guidance, and understanding. The more guidance, the more understanding. Thank you.
Amen.
And also Brian Johnson for healing.
Amen. Um, I would like to also add, um, Sister Judy and also Scott and Dawn. I think they may have had a little bit of heat as also over the weekend from the, you know, the very hot temperatures. I think they were outside for a long period of time, so keep them in prayer for recovery.
Pray for my grandson, Marius Johnson. He'll be going to the Citadel in, um, Johnston. So let's keep him lifted up in prayer. Thank you.
Amen.
I would like to ask for covering. I would like to ask for covering for my family, um, healing for employee and guidance for my brothers and sisters.
Amen.
Amen.
Let's bow. Heavenly Father, we thank you for who you are. Thank you for all the blessings that you provide for us, Father. Thanking you, Father, because you are God and you are God by yourself. Thanking you, Father, for our teacher tonight that brought such a wonderful lesson. Thank you for our pastor.
Thank you.
That brought a wonderful lesson. Thank you for each and everyone on the call.
Yes, Father.
Father, I bring the propositions to you and we ask that you do what you have to do, Father. One by one, I ask that you take care of the propositions, Father. We ask that you bless each and everyone that faithfully came on this call tonight, Father. Father, we just wanna say thank you for who you are. And Father, we can't do a thing without you. We just wanna say thank you. Thank you for an opportunity to come to this lesson tonight and learn more about you. Thank you for the ministry that you prepared for us, Father. We ask that you help us to do the things that you want us to do, Father. We can't do it unless you bless us to do it, Father. We can't do a thing without you. We wanna say thank you for an opportunity to bring us to the throne. And Father, we just say thank you for each and everyone on this call tonight, Father. We ask that you bless each and every one of them. We ask that you touch them from the head to the soul of their feet, Father. We ask that you give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Father, we thank you because who you are, Father, that's who we are. We thank you for the opportunity to come to you, Father. Now, Father, we ask that you bless our pastor, bless Chris, and bless each and everyone on this call. Those that wanted to be, we ask that you bless them. Our church family, bless the leaders in our church, Father. We ask that you give them a knowledge and understanding to be just like you. And Father, we just wanna say thank you for that opportunity. You didn't have to do it, but you did. And we want to say thank you.
We bless you, God.
Thank you. We bless you. And we ask that. We bless you. And we ask that you take care of every, each and everyone here tonight. Until we meet again, in Jesus' name we pray.
Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. Hallelujah. Hallelujah.
Jesus. Thank you, Lord.
Thank you.
Oh, God.
Thank you, Lord. Hallelujah.
Man. Good night, y'all.
Good night.
I'll be blessed.
Good night. Good night. Good night.
Love y'all.
Love you.
Hallelujah.
Good night.
Good night.
Amen.